Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for October 8th, 2025. If you're interested in joining our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticbg@gmail.com. Okay, we are ready to roll. You probably want to have your Slido going. I probably want to share my screen. There we go. Can you all see the board?
Yes.
Great. Okay, Eric is here. Eric was playing with me last week. Eric, would you like to continue playing with me?
Yeah, sure. You can give other people the chance if they want to.
Yes, how about one more? Somebody who I would like to invite people who have done this before, that they've participated in this study session before and would like to join the dream team, so to speak. Anybody want to give it a shot?
I would do it if you want me.
Okay, let's do it with Brenda. Great. Okay. Brenda is gonna be on the dream team too. Okay, so it's gonna be me and Eric and Brenda. It's always good to have an odd number to break ties. Okay, and let's see, the white team is on roll, so I can't imagine we're gonna cube this, so let's go ahead and roll the dice. Four, one. Okay, so this is for me and Eric and Brenda. We're coming in with the four, we gotta decide on the one.
We are ahead in the race, so that would prompt us to anchor up. However, we don't have too many in the zone, so there's not a big danger.
We're behind in the race, we're the white team, we're.
Oh, yeah, yeah, our pit count is on the top, yeah. Then in this case, it would attack from the seven.
But you want to hit, okay, and that seems like the two obvious plays. We're either gonna anchor like this, or we're gonna hit. Yeah, okay, and Eric, you're leaning towards the hit?
Because of the race, yes.
Okay, you want to try to catch up in the race. Brenda, what do you think?
Eight in the zone isn't very threatening.
Ah, so you're not very afraid of their offensive structure?
Yes.
Brenda, what do you think?
I think if you're not gonna make the anchor on the golden anchor on the 21, then hit like Eric said.
And you like to hit?
Yes.
Okay, I think I'll go along with the hit. I do appreciate the fact that they have eight in the zone, that's not so much. Um, I'm a little concerned, though, that we are outboarded. So I am sort of concerned about that. I I'm wondering if I might just make the anchor on this, but Eric and Brenda like to hit, so let's do it. Uh, oh.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
What does that term "in the zone" mean?
Yeah, in the zone, okay, so let's go back to the position. So in the zone is kind of like, so for red, the zone is like their infield and their outfield. So it's checkers that have already made infield points, and it's checkers in the outfield that are preparing to make innerboard points. So the more checkers that are in the zone, the more threatening your opponent's position is.
Yeah, so basically, all the checkers in the opponent's half of the board, basically.
It would be their zone.
Yeah.
So you can sort of.
To clarify on that, with the position red has now, would you consider the 14 in the zone or not? Because it's not directly bearing on an innerboard open point.
Which checker?
If we had, if we were to put a checker on the 14,
Ah, yes.
which is on our half, which is what Eric said, but not directly bearing down on any open point in the innerboard.
That's right. Generally speaking, people would say that's not in the zone.
Okay, that's what I would have thought, alright, yeah.
Would you consider, I have a question, would you consider the one point you made as being in the zone?
Yes, I would consider that in the zone.
Although it's past the opponents.
Yeah, so it's less valuable, for example, that one point that red has made, no good for priming. But certainly, good for a potential blitz, right? In a blitz, all points are created equal.
Okay.
Whenever you're thinking about attacking the opponent, count your own, like, in, like, for example, hitting loose on your homeboard. Uh, count your own checkers in the zone. If you have eight, it's a weak attack. If it's nine, it's okay. And if it's 10 or more, it's considered a strong indication that you should attack.
Right, these are, these are Michi's proverbs in his opening concepts book. Attacking with eight in the zone is weak, attacking with 10 in the zone is strong. And then, as Eric says, you know, there can be in the middle. Uh, nine is eh, sort of so-so. So in this position, we're supposed to anchor, and I think it's because of red's innerboard strength um, compels an anchor in this position.
Yes.
Okay, now time for the hive mind. Double twos. Okay.
Nothing fancy, point on the, come out and point on the four.
Okay, uh, and also, we can use the chat, you can, you can use the chat if you'd like to uh, give a position, so Rick is suggesting for 23, 8, 4, 6, 4.
I like that.
Yeah, I'm putting a couple of plays in the.
Yeah, that's the right move.
Okay, the Slido is open, if you'd like to vote. I think it's ready to go.
By the way, in case somebody didn't notice, Brenda and I got it wrong. It wasn't correct to to attack on the seven point, making the anchor was right.
Yeah.
It's what I get for listening to you.
Okay, the votes on Slido are coming in. Okay, we got a few votes, alright, so alright, all the votes are to make the four point. Seems like a pretty strong play, so one, two, three, four, four-point board. Looks pretty strong. Oh, I need to make sure I have the chat open. Uh, Rick says eight in the zone isn't much, but pointing on the opponent and making a fourth point is, you know, it's a blitz, yeah. And then you got a four-point board against a blitz, that's pretty strong. Okay, we're gonna make that play. And yeah, XG likes that play. It's a good play.
Before you roll, I'm wondering, if you fan, are we even too strong? To double, is our blitz, whereas because we only have eight, the blitz is too far away.
Well, I don't know, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, right? Uh, we might, I mean, 16 runners that are fan right now, let's find out. I mean, certainly, this blot on the seven point is a, is kind of a problem, right? Alright, uh, this looks like it plays itself, yes? Come in and just make the point. And now we got, we got a pretty good game. This, this might have rescued us from what Rick was suggesting, that maybe there would be a cube here. Okay, so uh, we'll just make this play. Alright, now the red team. Should the red team consider a cube? Anybody interested in talking about a cube? Not good enough?
It, it may be good enough, but I'm not sure we have, we did, I can't see any possible market losers if we are in a double situation.
Yeah, so that's, that's the key, right? You have to be able to lose your market. If you don't have market losers, you don't have a cube.
I think the 3-1 saved your neck.
Yeah, I think it, I think it did, and it produced a position where there are no more market losers.
Yeah.
Okay, so alright, we'll roll then. Okay, four-one for the red team. You can put some candidate plays in the chat. I'll put them in the Slido. Tough play, right?
What about 24, 20, 23, 22?
That's a good possibility.
I think 23, 22 is probably my one in any case, because that lets us get out with the six. I'm just trying to decide 13, 9, or 24, 20. I'm not really scared about leaving a loose checker for them hitting. On the other hand, if we can start, you know, setting up a prime, that could make it harder on him, on them.
Okay, and why are you not concerned about leaving blots?
Because we will have returns, and we have a better innerboard than you do.
A much better.
I'm willing to get into an exchange of hits with you.
Right, when you have a better board, you're happy with a blot hitting contest. Uh, the red team would welcome a blot hitting contest, and red has a blitzing uh, structure, and so welcomes that kind of exchange. Okay, I've got a few plays open in the Slido if you want to cast a vote. Okay, we got a few votes coming in. I think this is a tough play. One thing you want to consider also is like, what is your game plan? What are you trying to accomplish in this position? Okay, most of the votes are for sliding up both the checkers in the back.
I want to escape back checkers.
Because, so notice that after the play, you have a 17 pip race lead, so you can try to take advantage of that. Moving those checkers up challenges stripped points. Okay, so when your opponent um, in the opening, if your opponent starts with a 6-1, and then you roll a 4-3, the right play is to move both of the back checkers up to challenge these stripped points. So when your opponent has stripped points, and uh, challenging them is a good idea, it forces them to make difficult decisions. Okay, so I think this is gonna be the play. See what XG says. Looks right by a fair amount. It's a good play.
Good.
Trying, trying to escape, right?
Yep.
Notice, though, while the second one is a blunder, it does get a lot more gamins, because setting up that outfield is the way to gamin you. If we needed that, that would be the play.
Right, right.
Uh, it's not a blunder, it's half a blunder, I would say.
Yeah. Fifty-five millipoints is definitely something that I set up and pay attention to. That, that's a decent-sized uh, mistake that you want to take a look at. I would, I always say, anything under 10, I don't really care. Between 10 and 20, I start to think about it, not a huge deal. Once it gets over 20, I'm starting to pay attention. In the 50s, I'm really paying attention. Okay, the white team, ready to roll. Four and three. For the white team.
Sorry, Jason, did you say that you don't really pay too much attention to errors below 0.1 in equity?
0.01, 10 millipoints.
Oh.
Okay, the white team, so that's me and Eric, and Brenda have a four-three to play. I guess we have to consider this, right?
Right, that's where I was going.
It's, it's, it's not an exciting play, because it leaves a lot of return shots. Okay, 6-1, 5-2, 4-3. 4-2, 2-2, 1-2.
But it's another point.
It's another point. I'm just concerned about those shots, because when we get hit, it's bad. So I just did a qualitative assessment of um, getting hit, so and I've lost track, what did I say? 1-2, 1-6, 2-5, 4-3, okay, that's six. Um, 4-2. Um, 2-2 is nine, 1-2, 11, there's 11 shots, same as a direct shot.
Right.
Okay, now that's the quantitative, and then, and then I would give the qualitative part, which is, how bad is it to get hit? Um, I think it's not great. Our opponent has a four-point board.
At least we have an anchor.
We have an anchor, so that helps. If we didn't have an anchor, then I would be even more concerned about getting hit.
Even though it's a butterfly, it's still an anchor.
Yeah.
The problem is, if we don't do that, what other moves do we have? We either abandon the anchor, which is bad against a four-point board, or we overstack the six point by playing 13 to 6, which is terrible, so I don't see any other better option.
Yeah, I might be willing to make this ugly-looking play if we had a race lead and we were trying to get home. Um, so it sounds like we're leaning towards just making this and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it unstacks our six point as a bonus as well, so yeah.
It does.
It's not beautiful, but it works.
Okay, I have, I have some misgivings about this, but alright, I'll go along with it. I think my second play is to, is the overstack. Um, and you know, Eric rightly points out, this is really ugly, putting all those checkers up there. Um, alright, yes, we're making a three-point.
Yeah.
Um, just, I'm nervous about this, you know, it's a deep point, so it's not that great, right? If we were pointing and making the four point, I'd be a lot more enthusiastic about it.
You just reminded me that Dick Schiman has a lecture on ugly plays that I need to watch. When it's correct to make ugly plays.
I watched that last year, right before I went to New York, and during the New York tournament, I made two plays that, when, at the time, I said to myself, ooh, I think Dirk Schiman would call this an ugly play. And I made the Dirk Schiman ugly play, and both times, I turned out I was right. Um, or, to be more accurate, Dirk Schiman was right. And he was just guiding me.
Yes, fair point.
Okay, so let's do this. And XG says, good play. The ugly play, we're too far behind to make the ugly play. Alright, good job. Okay, now we have to grit our teeth while our opponents roll. And they did not hit us. Great, we survived.
Well, that's not a very good roll for this.
Yeah, you did better than survive, that's the worst role.
Come in on the one and go from 20 to 15.
Yep, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, yes, that's the only thing.
And if anybody is wondering if this is rigged, you bet it's rigged.
There really is no other choice, and we didn't offer the dice fairies enough of a offering.
Yeah. Okay, the Slido's open.
I would have said we didn't offer the backgammon gods enough blood, but your fairies is more, uh, it's nicer. Yeah.
Alright, lots of votes for stepping into the outfield, which, by the way, you, you can't be that, um. You'd be okay with this, you know, your, your your position has, um, you know, you still have the better board, right? So you can afford to play with, with a few blots around, and we have this blot on our bar point that needs to be recovered. Okay, let's look at this, the voting, yeah. Almost all the votes are for this, okay, so let's do that. Yeah, not really close. Look at what the second best play is.
For the old timers on fibs, we always talked about the dice fairies.
Yeah. I could never make this play. This is so ugly.
This is very bot play.
Yeah, this is, this is the anti-Richard Batten play, right? To give up your five point. Nobody likes that.
Yes, it is.
Hold on, hold on here. The roll, the one below it, and admittedly, it's just slightly below inequity. But from our perspective, the third option has a higher win rate, a higher backgammon win rate, and a higher gammon rate, and a higher backgammon rate, uh, smaller loss rate. Oh, but it's all because there's a bigger chance of being gammoned.
Yeah.
Everything else. That. Okay, yeah, no, I disagree with this, I agree with its math, disagree with its conclusion.
Okay.
It's probably because of cube ownership, it's not, it's not purely a consideration of the percentages you see.
Yeah, that's right, because, right, the value of the cube can be different with different moves, um. You know, maybe one of these times, we need to talk about, like, there's a concept of overkill, which is complicated, you know, the the value that you're extracting out of the cube. Okay, white team on roll, here we go. Six and five.
Cover your, cover your seven point.
And then?
Uh, how about we do six to one to try to pick up red's second checker on the 10?
So like this?
If they, yeah, I mean, it will make it more difficult for them to rescue their checker on the 10.
Okay, I have a different play altogether. How about we make the ace point?
Oh.
Hmm, that's, yeah, that's better, true. But then we lose the nice three prime that we have, which is very strong.
We do. And by the way, my, my pup Archie wants to say hi.
My buddy.
He's not very good at backgammon, he just wants to eat the checkers.
That's a cute dog.
Yes, yeah, he's a good boy.
What about the 13, 7, and 13, 8, and keep the guy on the one point block?
You're helping the other team.
I know, I'm so generous.
That was, that was what I was.
I like to have the last fortunate.
Right, oh, yeah. So Brenda, you're, you were thinking about this play, is that right?
I was.
Okay.
Basically, it puts us up there with builders to come in and get it. And we're not gonna be stripped if we have to use a seven or an eight.
Okay.
Um, Donna, the dream team is ahead on the score and has a better PR. Are you sure we are the last fortunate here?
Oh, ouch, shots fired. Um, so I think I really want to make the ace point, so now I think Eric is gonna be the deciding vote.
Ace point, yeah.
Okay, ace point it is, here we go. Uh, you know, there's nine dancing numbers, that's, that's important too, right?
That's true.
Okay. And let's see. Pretty close. Pretty close, so, I mean, why is it close? I mean, I think we talked about it, right? So, um, you know, this, this does break up any chance that we have of priming, so we're, we're kind of committed to one very specific game plan. Um, our position is gonna be kind of brittle. Brenda pointed out that bringing two checkers down, you know, produces a lot of nice spares. Um, just putting that checker on the bar will, you know, notice the difference in gammons, right? When we put a checker up, we win a lot more gammons, 19% instead of 12 and a half, and we don't lose that many more.
But, but you do lose more.
We do lose more, just not many, not much.
Not many, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Oh, I thought these dice were rigged, but maybe not. Hey, lots of, lots of good candidates here.
In on the 20 and go to the 15, and then two down.
The 10, yeah.
Maybe that's, maybe there's not a lot of good candidates.
I think you should be, you should make the 10 point.
Okay, I think there are two candidates. There's R15, 13, 8 twice, and then there's bar 10, 15, 10. So you can either make the 10 point, or you can make the eight point. And I think those are two, the two obvious plays. Here, let's, let's take a look at them. Okay, so here's the play that makes the 10 point. And then here's the play that makes the eight point.
That's less flexible, and I think we're gonna need the flexibility.
You think this one is less flexible, is that what you're saying, Rick?
Yeah, okay, isn't one of your adages that if you have seven points, that's at least one too many?
Yeah, that's called TMP, too many points. So you like the flexibility of this.
Right, it gives, checkers, we can move from the 13, a lot of, and the fact that the 10 point is not directly blocking the threes, actually a good thing. It means we can break it if we decide we want to or need to, without leaving a direct shot.
Okay.
It's one more left, right?
Uh, we were on the bar to start, so one, two, three, four.
Oh, okay.
Or one, two, three, four.
Uh, the downside of making the 10 is that you don't unstack the 13, which is gonna be still pretty stacked. So how relevant is that?
I think, I think 21 pips ahead, it's a mistake to create a point we have to clear, that's in a bad place, which is that 15 point. So we don't need that blocking point, that's completely unnecessary. We should be trying to get our checkers home safely, and I don't think that point is necessary.
Alright, so Bill, sounds like you want to make the 10 point.
Yeah, I'm just offering another perspective on why the 10 point's correct.
Okay, well, we've uh, looked at a lot of things here, the Slido is open, let's vote.
No longer a tie.
Uh, I don't have my Slido open, so I'm, I'm for making the 10 point if it's a tie.
Alright, we'll keep Bill Spruce as the tiebreaker and vote if we need it. Okay, we won't, we've got six votes. Must be some people here that are, that are not voting. We have 18 people in the call, three of them on a dream team, so they're in theory, 15 that could be voting.
I can't vote, I told you before, I'm just putting in the chat.
Okay. Alright, well, of the six votes, four of them were for making the 10 point, so I think we'll go do that. Alright. And? Oh, super close. Uh, is there a corollary to too many points, too many blots? I guess so, yeah, that can, that can happen, right? Okay, white team.
Sorry, the computer wants to make the 17 point.
Hmm.
Sorry, the, the, the eight, uh, yeah, the eight point.
Yes, but it's very close, so it's, it's it's hardly any difference.
Hmm, okay.
Remember to mute yourself after you speak?
Okay, what you and I.
For the good guys. I'm sorry, Rick, go ahead.
You and I neglected to consider with all our arguments, what if you roll double threes now?
Right.
That was the one thing we didn't consider.
Yeah. Uh, well, I definitely want to start here.
Right, and then 13 to 10 with two.
Sorry, Rich, I don't understand. If you rolled double threes, you just made the bar point, don't you?
Let's see, 13, 10 for one of them. Okay, I, I think we have to decide between this and just bringing two down. This is another possibility. I can't imagine there's a huge difference between these two.
Yeah. Um, that would be my choice.
You like to bring the two down?
I'd take the eight to the five with two.
Yeah.
10 to 10 with two.
Eric?
Uh, sorry, I was answering Jacob on the chat and didn't pay attention.
Here's the original, we're definitely doing this, and now.
Um.
There's one more.
Two down, yeah.
Two down, okay, that's fine. I don't think there's a huge difference between these two plays, and this, this play is fine. Okay, I'm not gonna go look at that right now, because I think we should put a vote up for a cube.
So I missed it, how wrong was it to make the eight instead of the 10 for red? With the double five?
They were very close, almost tied.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm, I'm opening up a Slido for a cube.
Oh, okay.
For the red team?
I'm sorry, I had to step away, Jason, what are you opening up the red, what is Slido looking at? Double or don't double?
The red team is on roll.
Yeah, I say no double.
We're not that far ahead. And um, there's a, I'm sure there are a number of rolls that expose us to a a hit, and now they've got a four-point board.
So a very useful rule of thumb to when to double in holding games like this is, well, at least if it's, if the opponent has the five point, in this case, the white has the three point instead of the five, but anyway, is if you have four checkers or less on the 13. Is if you have four checkers or less on the thirteen point. Because then you have the market losers of rolling a big double and be, being able to clear the thirteen all at once. And if you are fourteen pips or more uh ahead in the race, so in this case red is fourteen, is nine instead of fourteen, and uh they have five checkers on the thirteen, so I wouldn't, I don't, wouldn't say it's a double in any case.
Yeah, that all sounds right. Okay, so nobody wanted a cube, so let's roll. All right, two, one. Uh, let's, let's drop back just a little bit. The double threes. Um, a much bigger difference than I would have thought. But we got the right play. Uh, the cube, pretty sizable, no double. There just aren't enough market losers. Um, you can't see it in my screen share, but if I in XG, if you open up the dice distribution, it'll tell you how many market losers you have. Uh, you can't see it on my window, but I'm looking at it now. It says zero percent. There are no market losers here. So it'd be, it's a pretty big mistake to cube. You don't have market losers, you don't have a cube. That's pretty, uh, yeah. Pretty good starting place.
Thirteen to ten.
Uh, yeah, this one looks pretty straightforward.
Not even double sixes wouldn't be a market loser?
Well, no, I don't think so. I think I, I could still take after double sixes.
Okay.
Would um leave a blot on the thirteen.
If you, if you cleared that, yeah, there's, there's another way to play it.
You can take one of them all the way to the one.
We're clear the ten, either one of those.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Okay, but this two, one is pretty straightforward, right? We don't need to vote on this. Can't imagine there's any other play here. All right, let's just do that. Okay. Six and three. See, we're behind in the race, so I think we, we gotta hang back. I, I don't want any play like this. Or, you know. It doesn't look like a huge race deficit, but we're not on roll, so um I don't think I wanna do this plus. We're, we're outboarded. This checker could get attacked. They'll definitely hit loose.
Definitely.
So.
Why do you say you're outboarded? Why do you say you're outboarded?
Uh, oh, we're not outboarded, but um we're not outboarded, but we're facing a four-point board, so it's dangerous to leave a blot on its own.
Jason, why would we not consider uh thirteen to seven and thirteen to ten?
Okay, so one reason is, I uh, I, I got two reasons. One is, I think I wanna maintain some pressure on the midpoint and not make it so easy for them to uh to just move off of the midpoint, which might not matter. We might have to just break this uh anyway. And the other, the other is um connectivity of our, of our checkers. Um, once we do this, our army is completely split apart. Uh, we have our checkers all the way back on the twenty-two point anchor, and it's a long way for these these poor wayward sons to get home. Now, we may have to do this eventually anyway, break the midpoint. But I think we have a comfortable play that handles it right now.
Agreed.
I, I agree.
Okay, good. Let's do that. And XG does not agree. Uh, haha. Well, I guess I'm not smart enough to be able to make a running play like this.
Wow.
Yeah, wow. It's not a huge mistake, but uh this doesn't feel good. Not that the other play feels great.
Maybe you don't have any hidden covers, right?
Well, yeah.
Everything is not gonna get attacked.
Everything is stripped.
Yeah.
And also we get a discount by the fact that we can.
Double fives.
On the thirteen.
Double fives will hit and cover.
But that, but I got you, but that, that's a risk you'd be willing to take.
By the way, double fives is a great role anyway, because it's gonna clear the midpoint and, and you're gonna be able to cash next time anyway. So it kinda doesn't matter that double fives uh will, will point on us. But anyway, I, I, I'm okay with making a small error. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not great. I don't wanna live my life making uh errors of that size all the time, but you know, once in a while.
Um, Jason, what if we had, instead of having the ten point, we had the nine point? As red, then we would be able to hit him with a direct six.
Yeah, I, I would, I would definitely not run there.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, double threes for the red team.
You don't get too far ahead of yourself, even though I put in the chat that I was against the double, I think we should have still debated it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, I got a little trigger happy there. I, I, they're probably not gonna be uh market losers on that one either, but uh certainly this role changes everything. Remember, Rick, everything is rigged. Thirteen to seven twice.
At the bottom line.
Okay, the slider is open.
Just imagine anyone would pick something different.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna pick something different. I think you bring them all down.
Well, I got that in the slider. You could, you could vote for that.
I am voting for.
And then double them. That's not.
All right, the votes are all in to make the bar point. And I promise we will look at the cube next time. Uh, in fact, I, I won't look at the uh, the checker play just yet. Let's resolve the cube. Okay, six and two. It's not much fun. Okay, now I definitely do not wanna do anything foolish like this. This exposes us to twos, fours, and a bunch of indirects. Uh, no thanks. Uh, this is the time, I think now we're gonna have to break this midpoint, bring these two checkers down.
Go back.
Um, hey, this is original.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
You could give some thought to this, make a five-point board. I just hate the third checker on the ace point.
Yeah, both. What about in between uh thirteen, seven and covered the four, but leaving uh, uh, an ace, but we also, if if they don't get an ace, we pressure their twelve point, uh, the thirteen point all anyway.
I think the problem is that the aces are very bad for us. And I, I don't think we're gaining enough by um maintaining contact with their midpoint. Um, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I just think that the, the value that we get, extract out of it is not worth it for the eleven hits that we are forced to endure. So I'd like to bring two down, and Eric, what do you think?
Yeah, um, the, the mark of an educated mind is to be able to consider uh something without accepting it, so. Uh, yeah, I, I, I consider the, the thing, but I also agree with you, yes.
Okay, and Brenda?
So, I don't see.
Brenda, are you there?
Sorry about that.
No problem. So we kinda like this, this two-down play, which is kinda the play that you were after last roll, right?
Yes.
Okay, are you okay with that here?
I am.
Okay. All right, I wanna make this play, and then we, oh, actually, she didn't like that one either. Well, that couldn't, that couldn't matter. All right, we're gonna put this up for a vote for a cube now.
Uh, I didn't see the results for the.
Um, I don't wanna look at it yet, because the uh, the numbers in there could affect.
He hasn't shown them yet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm withholding the information.
That could affect.
Rick, I would, I would be in favor of a cube here.
Yeah, I think we have a cube.
As she would say, I, I make, I make double.
I make double.
Yeah, I, I, you say you would, would or would not?
Would.
Oh, yeah, if you notice, I already said ship it while they were debating what to do. I didn't care what they moved. I was ready to cube.
So Jason, I, I have a question.
Yeah.
A, a couple of rolls back where you guys had the six, three. And it was a, it was a running, a- and the correct play was a running play, leaving a blot.
Yeah.
And then the next roll was a double three. Right?
Right.
So is, I, I know it, I, I don't want you to go back and set all this up, but I know it's very unusual to leave your six um, point, but with those double threes, would the correct move have been to slide and hit the three?
It's possible. Um, I mean, we're, we're gonna look at it in just a minute. Uh, you, you you definitely would wanna consider that shift, shifting play.
Yeah, okay.
But like you said, it's enough to do to give up your six point, right?
Right, exactly, but the shift.
Everybody, everybody likes to talk about how important the five point is. Nobody talks about how important the six point is. You just take it for granted, cuz you're born with it, right? But the five point is not your most important inner board point. It's the six point.
Okay. Right, so that's what I'm saying is the shift, is it a good idea to shift off the six?
Yeah, it might not, it might not be, but we'll take a look at it after, after we resolve.
I like your expression, you're born with it, that's true.
Yeah, uh, there is a question in the chat, is this too good to double?
Double sixes and uh we're behind. I don't think so. I don't think so.
I don't think this is too good to double.
Our pure race equity is in the take range, definitely not too good, and it's not a pure race, so I don't see how it could be too good.
But everyone's saying take or double.
Oh, yeah. Okay, the slider, everybody says double, okay. Now, have you answered the question, do you think your opponent is going to take?
I did not think about that.
Take.
I didn't say anything.
You said you were going to take.
Oh, I did not say that.
Yeah, I think, I think the opponent would take.
Okay, you think we're gonna take?
A brave opponent like you would take.
I think you're gonna drop.
Adam thinks we're gonna drop. Donald thinks.
I think he's gonna take.
If you were playing with Tom Jane, it would definitely be a take.
Of course it would.
Of course.
This is a cash inflame.
So, Richard Batten, you think this is a drop?
Oh, yeah, I would drop.
Okay.
The question is, do you like the contact that remains or don't you? Because like I said, on the race it's a take, but do you feel like context more likely to work to your advantage or disadvantage?
Well, I guess that's the question. All right, well, let's find out now, so the, the team has voted to cube, and now the uh, the dream team has to decide on the cube.
I think this is a very clear take.
I want to take also.
I, I do too.
Oh, everybody wants to take, beautiful. So we're all gonna blunder together when, when XG says.
Yeah, then he must be wrong.
Okay, here comes the take. All right.
Could you explain why it's a clear take?
Yeah, lots, you have lots of, we have lots of ways to win. We can win with the race. We can win with some contact. We're about to assemble a five-point board, which is gonna make your life difficult when trying to clear the midpoint. Uh, well, we might have a few shots, a few fly shots. Um, there's just, there's just a handful of ways for us to win.
And it's not again, and there's very little gammon potential.
That's another key thing in here, is you just don't get gammon much. Look at the gammon chances. It's a, it's basically a fluke to get gammoned. And when it's a fluke to get gammoned, that means you can take a little more aggressively.
But the double was correct.
The double is
No.
It's right on the border.
It's a very thin no double.
This, by the way, if you knew this, if you knew this information that XG is telling you you should double all the time, because you might get somebody who's scared that drops this cube, in which case you will have profited immensely.
But that's only, only one point three percent of the people, according.
If you knew that more than one point three percent of your opponents would drop this, then it's clearly a cube. And I think there's plenty of people that would chicken out and drop this.
I'd drop it.
I'd, I think I would drop if I was white.
So I think we just proved it, right?
So you, you think the one point three percent is wrong?
No, I'm saying that if you knew that, that at least one point three percent of your opponents would drop this, then you should be cubing. And I think we just proved it, because Bill Powell said he would drop, and Brinker said he would drop. That's more, that's a lot more than two percent of the people that are in this room.
I think it works this way. Uh, it's slightly, slightly mathematically, like game theory optimally incorrect to double here. But if at least one point three percent of the people that you double end up passing, then it becomes mathematically correct to, to double here. So that's, you, you only need a tiny fraction of people to take this to make this a correct double. So that's why, uh, yeah. So that the lower the percentage on the best choice thing, you see there.
I'm a bit confused. The one point three means one point three of the people would pass.
No, you don't know what percentage.
Donald?
That's the threshold of Donald.
Oh, okay, it's the threshold, okay.
Yeah.
No, it's like.
Can, can you repeat that with everybody else not talking?
Okay, so what this number means is you would have to imagine yourself playing against a whole bunch of people. Okay, like, like a multiverse. Think of this as some weird physics thing, right? There's a multiverse, and you're playing this match a hundred different times against a hundred different people. And if you somehow knew that out of all those hundred people you were playing against, that that more than one point three percent of your opponents would drop. Then it's worth this risk of giving up this point oh, oh, two equity to try to get a drop. Well, you know for sure that there's going to be some people that will drop this. All you have to do is look at this position, say, ah, yeah, some people will consider this scary and will drop this cube. So if you knew these numbers, if you knew this uh XG output you would double this every time. You'd be very happy to give up this very small amount of equity. For the chance to possibly gain a huge amount of equity when your opponent drops.
Well, and, and Jason, isn't there something about you want, you wanna double when they take it? You want them to take a double?
Uh, well, sometimes, but in this case, I would love it if my opponent dropped this. If I'm red, I'm red, I, I send this cube over. Yes, please, I hope they drop, because that I, if I, if you knew that this was such an easy take, then you'd be begging them to drop. You, you.
Then there's Wolsey's law.
You don't wanna take this, do you?
Uh, Jason, there's, there's Wolsey's law.
Yeah, right.
If you don't know whether it's a take or a pass, it's definitely a double.
That's right. Okay, well, listen, it's five fifty-two. I think we ought to stop here and pick it up next week.
So you took it? You took the double?
Yeah, well, yeah, we took this cube.
Can we go back and look at that one play that we?
Yeah, we gotta go back and look at a couple of things. Okay, uh wow, so XG like just pile them up on the ace point. That's, that's a tough play to make. Okay, and then the double threes. Um, Adam was asking about possibly shifting points. Can I find one of those?
You know, it would have been, Jason, it would have been, it would have been the roll before where you had a six, three.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. Oh, oh, I see, I'm sorry. Oh, I, I guess we can't do it, cuz we'd have to set up a hypothetical.
Right, that's what I was saying. I didn't think.
Okay, yeah. Uh, Adam, you know, I'll look into that, and I'll, I'll send it to you.
Jason, can you go back to your, to your not bringing two down play? I wanna point something out, I think.
Um, this here.
Yeah, the reason I think that this is incorrect and the ugliness is of playing seven, one, six, four, is because the uh likely way that we would make a five prime is to break the, our midpoint, right?
Uh-huh, yeah.
And, and it thinks you could get a shot there, right? I think it's, wants you to hold that one more turn, because
Because this is the.
There are a lot of roles, we would have to break that point to do something good with that checker, and it's gonna leave a shot.
Like four, one or five, two?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the reason.
Okay, yeah, good, thanks. All right, I'm gonna mute everybody and then do a sign off. All right, thank you for joining the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for October eighth, twenty twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send us an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com.